Are we ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Yeah, that's, uh, okay. I'd like to call this, uh, first visit, the business meeting for the month of March of the Board of Education to order. Please join me in resetting the flag of allegiance. The flag is right behind you.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements, uh, the Board of Education met in executive session to deal with personnel contract matters, uh, prior to this meeting at 6:30. And, um, with that, I would ask for a, um, agenda, adopt an agenda. That's right. I'm looking down the line, motion to adopt the agenda. Bob, second, Christina, all of us in favor? Thank you. We'll move forward, uh, directly to Board of Education comments and reports. Who'd like to go?
Uh, sure, I'll start. You'll probably hear it.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's probably on him. Thank you. I, I first wanted to thank, um, everyone that made the weekend possible with the, with the snow on Friday, the, the school being closed. We had a big event here at High School East. Maintenance was, was amazing. They, they, they let us into the school early on Friday when it's closed so that we could get everything and, and to get set up. And, uh, it, it was an amazing turnout for over thirty, uh, or over forty inches, well, up to forty inches of snow out in Schoharian, and, and many school districts, about thirteen, had to come to this, this, um, venue for Odyssey of the Mind. And it went off without a hitch. It went really late, very late, because they had a two-hour delay. But I just wanted to commend our, our maintenance and administrators for really stepping up and making that happen. I also wanted to say and share that today was lobby day, and I got my first peek into what it means, or that means for a school district. Our Capitol was buzzing. That was actually pretty exciting to be part of that and to get, get a glimpse of it. I, along with Oliver Bell and Deanna Met with Senator Tedesco, Assemblywoman Warner, Assemblywoman Mary Beth Walsh, and Senator Marchionne. Dr. Robinson arrived prepared, and I, I say that sincerely. I was, I was impressed with the level of detail and the, the preparation that went into today. And in my opinion, he sent a clear message specific to the need for sustainable funding for education, mental health, and, um, something of topic today, school safety. I have no doubt you're gonna share details for tonight, so I'm looking forward to that. But want to point out that he also noted a subtle change that would have a negative, rather devastating, impact on our summer special education program if allowed to go through unchallenged. And this, this change seemed to surprise all of our leaders when we met with them. And that, that says something about our leadership, our administration, and, um, our superintendent, Dr. Robinson. There was also, like I said, considerable discussion about school safety. And I personally am looking forward and waiting to hear from the Save Committee tonight and look forward to hearing what has come from today's meeting. I know they have a tough job, tough job ahead, and they have my full support. And thank you for that time.
Thank you. Yeah.
Just real quick, I wanted to take a moment. You know, we didn't do it at the, at the end of the last meeting, but when administration and teachers, we had that presentation, forty-nine slides long. I mean, it was a long night, but I tell ya, every time we do that, I learn more. I learn about what's going on in each of the schools, at a district, at a school level. And we did not get a chance to thank every one of those, uh, teachers and administrators that came in, so I want to thank everybody for doing that. That was really outstanding. In fact, it carried on through the other meetings that occurred, uh, during the week, so thank you. Um, the other piece I wanted to also say was thanks to the ground crew. Oh, my Lord. This is the first time I've ever seen the, the turf plowed to get out for the, the opening of spring season. Well, I see the lacrosse players out there tonight, so unbelievable. So, uh, big, big thanks to the grounds crew. And, um, today, thank you, Dr. Robinson, great leadership. Um, the only one thing I do want to comment about today is I was appreciative of the people that we did meet with, our legislator, our legislators, that they were knowledgeable and they care. And together, you know, it's, we, as, as much as everything goes around federally and, and the state, that was, there, those were good conversations, but thank you for your leadership today, great points.
And as usual, both Deanna and Naomi say a lot of the things that I would like to say, so that's good, we're all on the same page on recognition and appreciation to our staff. Uh, but one thing, you know, just for our students and families, I'm very excited that the Drama Club will be doing the Sound of Music for the high school this Thursday. Knock on wood that snow is, uh, gonna get out of the system soon, uh, through, through Saturday, the tenth. Um, as always, it showcases the talent of our students, um, as well as our staff and those that are directors and help make it possible. Uh, it's just nice to see, we hear so many wonderful things about our sports programs. It's also nice to see, uh, all the wonderful things through our arts departments and our creative departments as well. Um, so again, always looking forward to that. Simple as that.
Uh, I would like to commend the district on a significant milestone across. We did reach final closure with the town on the land deal. Um, obviously wasn't, if you're aware, what happened last year and a half, not, uh, what we originally intended, but I would also commend the district for taking, and the board, uh, for taking decisive action. Noteworthy that even the last few days of reaching the final closure, I think we're the ones pushing to get this done. Um, and I think that has to be commended as well. A few letters were sent, uh, to, to ensure that happened in a timely manner. This now presents an opportunity to reflect on what we learned. From my perspective, uh, we probably want to think about how we work with another municipality. Um, we tend to get too focused, uh, point-to-point. It, I, from my perspective, I, I would prefer to have almost, uh, a presentation from us to potentially Half Moon, you know, just, just to be out there in the public and more importantly, board members fully understanding that, you know, this is going to be in front of the public and we can speak to it, either pro or con, but take a position in the public. Um, I think what happened, I spoke to this, I think, about six or seven months ago. I, I think the mechanics of maintaining confidentiality probably hurt us because we, and I felt this personally, we were reluctant to convey the purpose of what we were doing because we were so focused on not, uh, you know, explaining to the point where we potentially betray confidentiality. So, um, something to think about. My, my suggestion would be more, uh, board meetings between them and us. Allow them the time to ask questions, allow us the time to empathize and understand some of their concerns upfront. Um, this will be a much different type of, of situation because we're going to be working with a town that, um, would have to figure out things like, uh, how to bring in power, how to bring in water, how to manage traffic, how to, uh, take sewage out of a site like that. And it's a fairly, fairly sizable proposition to them. We have to empathize and make sure they're, they're fully understanding of our perspective and approach. So, potentially more sharing of perspective between both municipalities early on might be the way to go, and I'd like to add that to our consideration moving forward. Thank you very much.
Eric?
Um, thank you, Bob, for getting it out in front of some, sharing your assessment and thoughts on it. I think it's probably a good course for us. Todd and I, I, I attended the SAVE meeting today, and, uh, I would limit my comments to say that the district is very diligent and very careful and thorough in what it does, that we try to stay ahead of any threats, so forth, as much as we possibly can. I think we're very fortunate that we have a partnership with the Saratoga County Sheriff's Department because they do have expertise, they definitely have interest in the protection of our students in mind, and I, I think we've got a, a good partner in that. And although nothing is perfect, and certainly we are not perfect, uh, we're doing the best job we can in moving forward towards a even better situation as rapidly as we can, given the complexity and everything else that's involved.
Thank you. Cap?
Um, I'll defer my comments. Um, I know Dr. Robinson's gonna talk a little bit more about the SAVE meeting, um, as well and about the upcoming, um, public session associated with that, so with that.
Thank you. I, I do want to mention several items tonight. Just, uh, Naomi mentioned Odyssey of the Mind, uh, really from our board perspective. Naomi has been involved in this for a number of years. I didn't ask her how many, but, uh, it was very clear that he, uh, her leadership in this, and this was a test this year with the, with the, uh, terrible weather on Friday for kids to be able to get access to their schools, to get their, get their projects for access here. Um, and I totally endorse your, uh, suggestion that our staff bent over backwards to make this thing happen. And, uh, so it was, the hope was it would end at three-thirty to four o'clock by the time people got here, and they ran, and they ran the whole thing. And all, the, the gym floor over there was almost filled with kids, and the, and the bleachers were filled with, filled with parents at, at, uh, seven-thirty, as, as that event finished. A great way to be talking, talking about and teaching, uh, collaboration, teamwork, uh, communication between people, the kind of things, and creativity. And these kids were tested in this in terms of the assignments that were given. So, uh, thank you from, from this board to Naomi and to the other team. It's not a one-person effort, but you, you, you are a, a lead person on that. We thank you for that. I do want to mention, um, something that we talked about at the last board meeting. The, uh, the board plans, uh, this year, we had a goal of trying to communicate in a, in a more open way, a dialogue with, uh, with the public. You, you'll notice tonight, tonight's a, the next thing we'll move to on the agenda is public comment. We asked, when we, when we talk about comment, we say that we're not going to respond to the comment. There are times when I think we need a response, where we want to, and the board agrees, that we, it would be good to provide a forum that we could have some dialogue. We had one earlier in the year, we piloted one on mental health, the real critical issue. Uh, on Thursday, April nineteenth, we're going to have, uh, a public forum, a dialogue on, um, safety and security. And, um, it's, the goal of that is to, one, we, I suspect there are, there, and I know this because we received several communications, there are concerns within the public, there are ideas out there. Uh, we have had collaboration as, uh, we'll talk about with the SAVE committee and with the people outside of the school, professionals looking at what we do and, and talking about how we go forward. Um, I envision that those folks may do some early presentation of that, and then we're gonna open it up to the, to the public. The meeting is gonna start at seven o'clock, and we're not gonna have any other board business that night. It's just going to be a, a public forum Thursday, April nineteenth, starting at seven o'clock, so I want to, uh, mention that. Um, third, the lobby day today, I do absolutely agree. Um, we, we saw more educators and, and fire bureau members, I don't know how they mixed us together, down at the legislature today. And I, I can assure you, I can assure the public, um, and board members who have been there in the past, know that the leadership that Oliver provides in providing information to our legislators, um, every one of them said, "I didn't know that," when we talked about some of these funding things. And Oliver does it in such a way that he's got, not only does he have the facts, but he says to them directly, "I'm not making this argument on behalf of Shenandoah. This is, this is about what we should be doing for kids across the state, and these decisions that you're making here," and, and you may not be aware of the hit, the language here at the back, um, you do a fabulous job at that. And, and every case, every case today, they acknowledge that, that they were learning something new. So, so thank you for that. Um, last thing I'd like to, um, we have on our agenda tonight, uh, nominations and petitions for board vacancies, and I want to announce that I will be resigning this board as of June thirtieth. And the reason I'm choosing June thirtieth is this board's got a lot, uh, on its table, on its plate, and, uh, by doing it at the end of June, um, it allows the election process to go forward. I'm in the, the first year of a three-year term, and, and so there will be a, um, a vacancy, a two-year vacancy that the public will have a chance to pick who they'd like, and, um, we'll get that information out there and, uh, as part of the process that we deal with. The reason, why am I doing it? I love being on the board, and I've been, I've served on this board on and off since nineteen eighty-eight. Um, it's a long time. Uh, but changing circumstances within my family, I, I'll just give one example, and, and maybe some of you have had to deal with this yet, um, and I presume you, if you haven't, you will, such as assisting in the care of my out-of-town ninety-four-year-old father-in-law, who probably should be in an assisted living or nursing home, but refuses to go, and is in Platschler, New York, we find, we find ourselves running up and down the Northway to deal with that. And I know it comes at an expense, and the expense is, uh, it inhibits my ability to serve what I think, and what I see from other board members, as a necessary level of availability and commitment. So, I, um, I will be, at the end of June, I will be off this board, and there will be a replacement. So, um, I just, I want to announce that tonight. Um, it is with a heavy heart that I do that, because I love serving here. I can't think of any, uh, public service that is more, um, that I think will touch as many lives. And, and I just remind the public and anybody who's considered, and we do it for free. And actually, that's a misnomer, because there is a cost to do it, isn't there? There's the cost of the time, the time away from family, and that's what I'm dealing with. So, um, I thank you for your support, and, uh, I'm not going away till the end of June, and that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. And, uh, so we'll move forward on, on, uh, public comments. I'll invite our students, if they're here, to come forward. While they're coming forward, I'll get the little preamble to, uh, public comments, an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. Uh, if, if there are, um, any residents who'd like to speak tonight, uh, there is a comment form at the back. We always want to make sure, one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we're, we can get back to people, we have the right address and, and we have contact information. The board will not address specific comments, but will ask your name and address to follow up. The board reminds residents, the public comment portion of our meeting is only one item in a long agenda. We therefore ask that each speaker be as succinct as possible, remarks be limited to two to three minutes. I also expect the residents to speak in a respectful and courteous manner so as to model proper civility and decorum for our students, and we promise to do the same from our side. Residents may also contact the board via voechnot.org. Many people are taking advantage of that this, these days. All questions come into the Office of Public Information Officer, are shared with the Board, and our superintendent, and as appropriate policy questions and concerns are typically addressed by the Board President. Operational questions and concerns are typically addressed by the superintendent or designated need. Now, with that, I'm going to start.
Hi, I'm Paige Ratzep. Maddie Sarge is gonna be here tonight, she's not feeling well. Um, in regards to what's happening in the Senate right now, sadly, we are going to most likely have to cancel our dodgeball tournament, which is our most popular event since, as long as I can remember, before I even was in high school or even middle school. Right now, we only have five packets turned in, and to break even, you would need around twenty, twenty-five, so it looks like it's not gonna happen. Um, in the upcoming meetings, we're gonna be looking at new ways to fundraise, try to plan events that students will want to participate in, as we have not held an event this year that students have wanted to go to. So, it's been a difficult year in that sense, um, but we're definitely working on it. Um, yesterday in our meeting, we took a general vote, um, to get the consensus on what we wanted to do about the representative situation that I mentioned last meeting. Um, we voted no in a majority of twenty-two to eighteen, so next meeting, we will not be voting on legislation to add representatives to the Constitution. Um, and then we are also planning some coffee talks for next, next month in regards to possibly a school walkout that is in the works. Um, that will be on April twentieth, as we are planning right now, hopefully. Um, and the reason we're doing that is because we want to open up a dialogue about school safety and what that means to everybody. Um, and, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, it's interesting that you're talking about April twentieth, and we're talking about a, a open forum on the, on the nineteenth, so maybe we can help with that. Uh, I would invite, if anyone from the public would like to speak at this point, uh, we'd ask you to come up to the microphone. Um, yes, ma'am?
For reasons, each janitorium. Here you go. Take, pass it down, it's like I'm a teacher. There you go.
The microphone's yours.
Thank you very much.
Oops.
Um, so I wanted first to thank the board for taking the time to listen to my concerns. My name is Christine Bodygig. I'm a mother to an Aranjan first grader and to a future Shen student. My husband, Mike, and I are both Shenandoah graduates. I'm here tonight to discuss my concerns with the plans in place to secure the ninety-eight-hundred Shen students while they're here on campus. Following the recent event in Parkland, Florida, Superintendent Dr. Oliver Robinson sent a message to the community and parents outlining the current practices related to school safety. And I'd like to read a small portion of that email. Dr. Robinson says, quote, "School safety is a community responsibility and the work is continuous. Until there are laws that get the weapons of mass destruction off the streets, we will unfortunately face the threat of such realities. Too many communities have faced these realities. Jonesboro, four students and a teacher killed by two classmates. Columbine High School, two students massacred twelve classmates and a teacher. Sandy Hook Elementary, twenty, six- and seven-year-olds and six staff members murdered. And Parkland, Florida, seventeen students and staff executed. Dr. Robinson is right. This is reality, not just for these communities, but for every community across our great nation. Every town research organization has been tracking incidents of gunfire on campus since twenty thirteen, and the results are frightening for any parent like me who puts their child on a bus in the morning. A hundred and sixty school shootings across thirty-eight states. An average of two shootings took place in a kindergarten through twelfth-grade setting every month. In more than half of those, the shooter intentionally injured or killed at least one person with a gun. A recent press analysis found a child brought a gun onto school property almost daily during the academic school year. As much as we would all like to believe the events that unfolded in Jonesboro and Columbine and Sandy Hook and Parkland and dozens of other schools could not happen here, they can, and many parents like me fear they will. As a parent and as a school district, of course, we want to provide the best for our children, give them every opportunity to thrive. The Shenandoah Budget Book says the district has, quote, "A commitment to provide our children with ample opportunities to explore, to innovate, to problem-solve, and to be politically sagacious." And that sounds great, but the reality is we can't achieve those goals if our children's basic needs aren't being met, and safety, to me, is about as basic as it gets. Right now, we're failing to meet that basic need.
Christine, can I just ask you, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We do talk about a limit, and, um, some of this material that you have in here, that what Dr. Robinson has outlined, I think we will hear some more tonight and also at the forum we have. But I'd like to ask you, 'cause I don't want to miss on this, I want to get to, what's your recommendation?
Sure. Uh, can I make one point before we get there?
Okay, absolutely.
I'd like to talk just briefly about the school buzzer system, because that's something that, um, as I've posted on social media about this meeting, parents have raised concerns about, other parents saying that, like, "We visited Aranjin and nobody knew that we were coming, but we were buzzed right in." Other parents say they didn't have to identify themselves, and they're getting in. And I've communicated with Dr. Robinson, so I'm sure he's not surprised to see me here, in that the buzzer system, like Sandy Hook had a buzzer system, and Adam Lanza shot through the glass and walked right in. So, I just, I, I think that that's highlighted by schools as a safety precaution, but it doesn't seem to me to really be keeping kids safe. So, that being said, I'll skip to, my point is this. What I just outlined isn't the bare minimum of what we should be doing, though I didn't just outline it, but you have it in your packet. I understand investing in security upgrades may mean sacrificing other projects. It may mean making some difficult decisions, but this is at the core of who we are as a community. We must ask ourselves what is most important? Where do our priorities lie? We must evaluate those questions and let those projects of lesser importance be considered at another time. But I didn't just want to come here tonight, as you said, to complain and to point out shortcomings of our system. The packets I presented to you outline several options to enhance security at our schools. First, school guard glass. Not bulletproof, but so difficult to damage to the point of gaining entry to a school, police would arrive before an assailant could get in. I recognize changing out all the glass in the entire district could be too costly, even at a price far reduced from bulletproof glass. But how about putting it in the windows of the classroom doors to protect the kids huddling together? Also, consider this, hurricane-proof glass is the only thing that stopped the Parkland shooter from turning the third floor into a sniper's nest and killing students as they ran from their building. There are other options, too. The Barracuda Intruder Defense System, designed by an active shooter training instructor, the device slips under the door and locks it down in seconds. The sleeve is a steel reinforced device placed over the arm of a door closer capable of withstanding more than five hundred and fifty pounds of external force. The sealed system, a device permanently installed on doors that can lock them down remotely with the click of a mouse from the main office, and then allow dispatchers to open rooms one by one as police search them. Finally, after talking with my son and understanding that his window in his classroom door is uncovered, and therefore anyone who walks by could see the kids huddle together, I suggest maybe we put some blinds or construction paper or student projects in the windows of the classroom doors to block an assailant's view. It's believed Adam Lanza passed a room full of children because the window was simply covered and he couldn't see anyone inside. When projects have been made a priority in the past, you've found a way to fund them. For example, when the district wanted to do a facilities upgrade, it found a way through refinancing existing debt, capital reserve funds, and state aid to cover most of the project, costing taxpayers less than two dollars. Included in your packets is an article about a security device a district funded through donations from businesses, including Honda. I implore you, as the budget, as the board that has control over how the district spends its one-hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar budget, to reconsider how that money is being allocated. Too many parents are kissing their sons and daughters goodbye in the morning worried they'll never return home. It's not dramatic, it's not overblown, it's, as Dr. Robinson said, reality. Just ask families at Parkland or Sandy Hook or Columbine or Jonesboro if they think securing their schools should have been the priority for their funding. Finally, I mean, I wrote out that I understood you wouldn't respond, and we will definitely be in attendance at the meeting. I appreciate the board addressing these concerns, and we will definitely be attendance in a meeting in, on April nineteenth, and I hope that the rest of the community hears about that meeting and shares our concerns and comes and speaks with you about.
Christine, I want to make sure that you understand, we are not on different pages on this.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the amount of work that you've done on this, and we will share this with our, our SAVE committee, which just met today, and, uh, use this along with other, we're getting a lot of input from people.
I'm sure.
Appreciate your taking the time to do this, putting it together so professionally, giving some of the history. We will definitely go through this.
Yeah, I hope you'll read everything that I wrote out, but, you know, my husband and I are graduates of Shen, we have great respect for Shen, you know, we went through the district, it's helped us be successful. I just want to make sure that when Tommy comes to school in the morning, he's as safe, we can never protect them from everything, but I do think that we could take some additional steps. I think that's the point.
And we're parents as well, so.
Yes, of course.
Parents and grandparents, so.
So, our kids are in the schools as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, would anyone else like to speak tonight? If seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Um, thank you very much, Mr. Casey, and, um, just a couple of brief things to, to mention. We mentioned the advocacy piece, and I just want to reiterate that piece again, particularly for our public. Um, and also related to the topic that was just discussed by, um, Mrs. Button?
Buttongate.
Buttongate.
I know, it's.
Yeah, yeah, by Mrs. Button, Buttongate. Um, and, um, just last night, the, the state, uh, the Senate House, um, unveiled, I think it was like fifteen different bills in the, in the state legislature pertaining to, to school safety, and, as was mentioned here today, we were, um, doing some advocacy, we don't do lobbying because it's a whole political distinction, some advocacy work at the state, legislative office building. And one of the things that, that we're really focused on is how do we, um, differentiate between what's popular versus what's practical and sustainable for our schools? And, and, and even some of the legislation that's being passed, um, you know, how do we avoid those things that mandate schools do certain things that may not be the best things actually for schools to be, might be the politically popular things for schools to do. And I say that because ironically, as Mr. Casey pointed out, um, today we had our SAVE committee meeting, and, um, when we think about school safety, we kind of think about in four, um, dimensions. The, the preparedness piece of it in terms of, um, what are some of the research things, what's some of the best practice? The response aspect of it, and I, and I'll share this, this graphic with the board here to, we use this at our meeting today. The recovery aspect of it, and then mitigation and, um, piece of it. And while they might be in different domains, um, they're all connected, they're not separated. And so, we spent a lot of time today, Mr. Delalo and Mr. Gilbert, um, representing the board on that wide committee. We have law enforcement, we have community members, we have students. In fact, the student today was great, um, Ben Morris was a, made a lot of great contribution to the, to the conversation today. So, wide cross-section of folks, and really assessing, talking about what we're doing now, talking about some, some potential ideas of things that we do moving forward. And, and so there will be things that we do. I think the things that may frustrate, um, the public, internal public and external public, uh, there are certain things that we do that only certain people know that we do, because if we tell people, "Oh, yeah, we've been doing this, we're doing that," we just kind of, you know, it's kind of revealing, it's telling your enemy all your secrets kind of thing, so to speak. Uh, and so, and then there's some things that we do that, that publicly people need And so, and then there's some things that we do that publicly people need to know that we're taking these measures to ensure safety. So school safety is a priority, and preserving a quality education environment is a priority. And so finding that balance is something we're focused on. So I typically don't necessarily respond directly to a comment at the board. But we left, we ended our meeting today with probably like, I think we have 33 members on the Safe Committee. It's a pretty large committee, to say, if people leave here and have different thoughts and ideas, send them to us. Because there are people that's much smarter than I, and spend way more time thinking about this than I, and we need to get the best ideas to the table, so we can then start figuring out logistically, and otherwise, what we can effectively do and how we invite, enhance the safety of our buildings. So those conversations are ongoing. Kudos to Sheriff Zerlo, and I say this specifically, because the Saratoga County Sheriff Department, they have been with us since Sheriff's, and it's not a political statement, because I know the sheriff has run for office at some point, so it's not a political statement. It's a very real statement. They have been with us since he became sheriff, day one, having an increased presence. We anticipate there will be a even greater presence in our schools. And it's not law enforcement for the purpose of people carrying guns, but law enforcement in terms of people understanding and giving us feedback on, day-to-day feedback on dynamics in the buildings. Law enforcement in terms of people building a relationship with kids. And law enforcement in terms of people providing information that we may not necessarily be privy to because of things happening outside of school. So we're looking forward to those relationships with the Sheriff Department. We also have a pretty close relationship with the New York State Police as well. So I'm sharing that with the board and certainly now to the public. So people know that, one, we don't react to things because it's popular. We do things because it enhances the quality of the experience for our kids. Everything is going to come back to that. How does it enhance the quality of our experience for our students? And so we certainly want to do that as well. So the Safe work is ongoing, and you'll certainly hear more about it. And our goal is to hopefully use this presentation, if you go to this one pager, which captures, quite frankly, many, many plans on one thing, because we realize many quickly, we have plans, but who's combing through versus capturing information, so people can easily grab it as part of the board's public conversation. Because I think the public also need to have a great appreciation of some of the things that we're doing, because I think people make assumptions about what we're doing or what we're not doing. And we want to be able to have an objective, intelligent conversation. And I think this is a great indication of an objective, people objectively thinking about things and bringing ideas, say, think about this as you consider things. So we're looking forward to that. And related to that, we also have, on this Saturday, again, looking at the whole weather situation and community conversation at High School West, 9:30. So it's another opportunity for us to engage the public in some conversations on whatever topic of interest for the public. So we're looking forward to that opportunity as well. And since my last comment on this, for all those kids who are not doing their homework tonight, do your homework. Do your homework tonight. Don't cross your fingers, put spoon on the windowsill, put your pajamas on backwards, all those kinds of things that people do to get a snow day. Do your homework tonight, because Mother Nature has an interesting way of fooling all of us.
I finished mine.
So thank you, I appreciate that.
Bill, can I say one thing? Bill, can I just say one thing? Dr. Robinson, you made a point, and you made it a couple of times in the last couple of weeks, and I just want to comment on it, because it was very thoughtful. And I had mentioned it to Todd today, too. It's not having the sheriff's car in the middle of the grass when I'm driving up to High School West, and I go, oh man, I feel better. It's that resource that you mentioned that was in the school. It may be a retired, you know, I'm making, a retired police officer, or whoever it may be, that understands the traffic flow, that knows the kids, the children coming in, the students, that understands the capacity within the school, that knows it. That understands that maybe the one student that we had to expel or something happened is following that and can understand that. That's where you get that knowledge. And it's, again, it's not the person, like you said, they could be on high school, if something happens in the front of the building, they're in the back. It's going to take them how long to get to the front? You know? So you really knocked on something today, and I wanted to say that that was very thoughtful.
Appreciate it. More to come, more to come, in general and otherwise, related to this extremely important topic as we move forward. So we're looking forward to that.
Yeah, move right on to information.
So, Mr. Casey, and I want to say, for people who don't know, Mr. Casey was the president of the board when I was hired, and Mr. Delalo was going out. So I think Mr. Delalo started the process, and Mr. Casey finished the process. So between the two of them, it's their fault that I'm here.
He blames me, and I blame him.
So I say that, you know, in jest, but I really appreciate your tremendous service. I know how hard this decision is for you, but we also recognize that, at the end of the day, you know, family and those things that we hold dear take precedent, and we have to know when to say when. So I want to say, thank you for your tremendous service over my 13 years here at Shen. So I appreciate that very much. And tonight starts the process, if you will, for potentially new board members. We have two individuals who will be up for reelection, Mr. Presley and Mrs. Rajat. And so tonight, the petitions for Board of Education are available. Certain people here that could grab one. If people want to contact my office, or Mrs. Wetmore Chase, who's the district clerk, to get the petitions, all the information will be available for seats on the board. And now we have a vacant seat, so we actually have three positions that will be potentially looking for board members for. So that process starts tonight, and will run for the next month or so as we go through the board process. So if there's any question the board have, certainly have, we have copies of the package petition here. And I'm going to be presumptuous that these two people want one. So, and certainly, packets are here for people who may have an interest running for the Board of Education. Any questions on the petitions?
I'm sure it says here, Oliver.
How many people do they need?
The signatures.
The number of signatures.
Sixty-four, sixty-four signatures.
Sixty-four signatures. And they need to be in 30 days in advance.
April 16.
April 16.
Yep, so all the information is outlined in the package itself. The advocacy piece that we already mentioned a couple of times over, I don't know if you have, I just handed out the document that we used it. I don't know if there were questions that the board had on it. I like this document as well.
Great job there.
That was a very good one.
Mrs. Carmen, you will just, so the school calendar, we mentioned the school calendar before, so Mrs. Carmen, you're going to talk a little bit about the school calendar, some really neat pieces about it, that some of it is still, quite frankly, still somewhat undecided.
We still have issues.
I'm sorry, what? Do we still, we're waiting for BOCs, though? We're still waiting on those?
The answer is yes and no, because the BOCs adopted a calendar. But in fact, let's go right to that ranking in a second.
We're going to discuss that.
The ranking is right here, spring break. This is what every parent, this is the only reason why parents want a school calendar. They want to win the spring break, so they can plan ahead. The problem that we have right now, and it's a pretty significant problem. In fact, this weekend, we had our advocacy conference in Albany, and I spent a lot of time talking to some, so there's four BOCs regions. We have a Capital BOCs region, which we are part of the component school. Then you have the Warren Suffolk Hamilton BOCs, Saratoga BOCs, that goes to Saratoga County North and some of the Adler-Redneck schools. Then you have the, what we call Quest Star Three BOCs, which is Rensselaer County, Columbia Green County. Then you have the HMF, which is the Hamilton Mohawk, all that area goes towards Johnstown. So four BOCs, and in 18 years of Vayn's Uptown, all four always had the same week for spring break, which makes sense, because we have shared, so we have some kids go to Capital Region BOCs for VOTAC. We have some kids go to Saratoga BOCs for VOTAC. So just Shen, for example, we have staff members who live in Saratoga BOCs, are in Rensselaer Green BOCs, are in HMF BOCs, are in Capital Region BOCs. For the first time this year, we have two separate, two different weeks for spring break. It's a huge dilemma, and I found out this week, pride is an awful thing, because it's coming down, who's going to blink? The BOCs up north, they're taking it back to their cabinet this week to discuss it, because they want the week prior to, the week of the 8th. We have right now the week of the 15th. The problem we have, if we have two separate spring break, just think about, just for a parent who haven't worked at Shen and have kids in Saratoga Springs. Your kids will be off one week, you'll be off another week. Something is going to give. Either you're babysitting expenses for one week, and you're taking your kid out of school, the next to go on spring break week, or that's what they're going to do, because their love's trying to come to work every day, so they're not going to miss work for a week. So you just kind of see the practicality of the dilemma. Sports, modified sports, for two weeks, because we play a lot of teams outside of our region, modified sports. For two weeks, we can't schedule anything in a prime of spring sports. Because one, so it's such a nightmare situation that we try to figure out. And if nothing happens, I'm just sharing with you what will be the reality of the complication. So right now, this is what capital reflects what Capital Region BOCs report of, has adopted, and the conversations continue. I'm hoping by the end of the week, somebody's going to blink. And we come back before we adopt, we're going to ask the board to adopt something we just presented, that we'll make this change. And so this is a big uncertainty right now, is will the spring break stay the way it is? Or will the spring break go the other way? Because we need to have uniformity across the four regions.
Why don't we just extend ours for two weeks?
So you know what, drive a February break, have a two-week spring break. Maybe that's what we do.
Is there a rationale that supports one as opposed to the other?
Actually, there is, Mr. Delalo asked if there's a rationale that supports it. So the BOCs up north, they're thinking is, the week before gives more time between the testing and score and the testing. That's their rationale. The BOCs here typically ties it on to Good Friday as a part of that sequence. So, and one up north says traditionally, we've always had the second week. So it's a combination of tradition, a combination of different people's analysis. And as much as that's wonderful, I don't care, because the problem I have is, we probably have 200 staff members that straddle the line, that's going to be a huge conflict for. So again, it's a practical problem that we could potentially face, that people have to potentially deal with. So I don't know if it's going to change, but we're certainly advocating strongly that something can give in the sequence. So I'm also taking back to you, Mr. Delalo, being on the BOCs board, that maybe you need to go back to them and say, hey, you know what? Maybe we all need to go back one way, but we all need to be, I don't care what week it is, to be quite frank, we just need to be on the same week. And so that's a big issue right now.
It's a staff issue, it's also students.
Students.
Because we have students, right, who are taking advantage of these various BOC programs, and that drives them nuts as well.
So besides that piece, you'll notice a couple of changes with the calendar in that the format is different, very different this year. And changed to mirror that of BOCs, but also to try to clean it up a little bit, because it was very confusing with all the different colors and legends and so on and so forth. So that's why it has the new format. You'll also notice there's a couple of days in there that are a little bit different than what we've had in the past, because of the number of calendar days. Actually, if you look at June, it's a week later next year with the region. So graduation is actually, would fall on a Wednesday. And because it goes a week later, it extends the number of calendar days, so we need to look at what other days we would have off. Therefore, if you look at, I believe it's the 21st of December is a Friday before Christmas, before that winter Christmas break, and also the day before Thanksgiving are the major changes.
More to come on this.
More to come, but just to give you some flavor of some of the dynamics that we're dealing with. This is going to be interesting, one, next year, we will be in school till the end of June.
For real?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, it's the end of June.
Oh, next year, yeah. I'm like, oh, this one up.
No, next year, it's the end of June.
When's the last year's going for high school students in June?
The last, technically, the fourth test, right here, the eighth, I think it's going to be like the 11th.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the, the local exam for high school starts on the 17th. So the rationale again, even for the longer, the longer calendar, this year, the state education department did a pretty extensive study. They wanted to do two things, and it's still, actually, it's still not finalized or registered right now. By law, schools have to be in session for 180 days. And that's why the snow day thing becomes, because right now, today, if we have a snow day tomorrow, so it's an interesting thing, back up a second. So high school and elementary school actually end two different times. Elementary school and earlier than high school. So technically, we have 186 days, for example. This 186-day calendar is 186 potentially secondary days. It's actually 183 elementary days. So when we come to snow days, we actually have three days for elementary. Right now, we have used three days in snow days. So elementary is right on the cusp of, and so, you know, not till January, but I would tell elementary parents, don't be surprised if instead of your kid getting out on June 21st, this year it might be June 22nd, because we have to find a way to make up that day. No one wants to hear that we're going to cut into April break, because people got plans to go to all over the world, wherever they go to. So that's, I just give that to the dynamics to the board. And again, we don't use that to drive decision about snow days, but that's the implications of when we have snow days. And so this 186, while we have, the good thing about this is that we have some days, such as this December 21st day, or the day before Thanksgiving Day, based upon whether that we could potentially play with. And, but it drives, so the state wanted to give across, the state education department wanted to give across the state, a wider latitude, like 190 days potentially that you could play with, because every school district within their contracts have limitations within their, be it CSE contract or STA contract ministry. And so our limitation is around 186 plus, and we kind of do the plus and minus. And so it gave us more latitude to do things such as the day before Thanksgiving without it in the past. It's always been the biggest complaint, we want what they call a pie day, whatever. I don't eat pie, so, you know, it didn't matter much for me, but anyway. So everybody have pie on next year, but they hate June. That we'll go, school is done, and you have 4th of July the next weekend. So that's a trade-off with this whole calendar sequence. Some places are looking to have graduation before the exams are done. We're not, because we want to make sure that kids have all opportunities to be successful. And we don't, by policy, we don't allow kids to cross the stage until unless they satisfy all the requirements for graduation. So we just don't give the hope that you're going to graduate after we give you the diploma. So just again, some dynamics, and we hope by, when we bring this back for board approval, we'll get, and if they're not resolved, this will be pretty much the calendar that we'd be recommending.
When will this come? Early April for approval, or one of our meetings?
No.
Even before that?
It's not April, the April 10th meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay, yep. So we want to move on to first reading of policies. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it'll be, we're going to bring it back into March. We may, we think about at the March 13th, but if we need some time, we may push it back a little bit.
Okay, yep.
So for first reading policies? So again, we have a series of first reading policies that are related to personnel matters for first reading. We have an addition that was added regarding the language of hiring family members and related persons. There was some language added to one of the policies here, as well as one in the second reading, which I'll address in a minute.
Any questions?
I think it would be good to clarify the fundraising on the Shen website. That's been a fairly topical issue for folks as far as how the websites use for fundraising. And I think what was agreed upon makes sense here, everybody. I think one of the concerns we had early on was potential gouging people that wanted to buy a T-shirt, because, you know, a group might be.
The Shen shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think how you resolve it, what came out of it.
What the policy.
And a lot of it was a lot of work before the policy meeting, was to figure out how to allow people to do that as long as it's for a specific event or a reason, as opposed to blindly saying, okay, the T-shirt's going to cost you twice as much as a regular T-shirt.
So communicating that out is what you're saying, update.
Yeah, again, that would be helpful.
Yeah, no problem.
So I don't know if you want to put it up or not, but there are various choices, really. A group could go with the standard markup, what, 8%?
On the Shen, the lighting agreement.
Yeah, and then, in that case, the people running the Shen site are the ones giving that markup or applying it to the group. But then if the group wants to have a specific event to get paid for buying, selling that shirt, then that is transparent to the person buying, that yes, that, you know, $10 more for that T-shirt is actually paying for a specific thing for that T-shirt club. And I think that way, you know, people are not being blindly asked to pay a huge markup, and they factor that in when they buy that. So I thought that was pretty, extremely well managed, so that every side sort of gets to see this, and people aren't blindly paying a lot for something for. to see this, and people aren't blindly paying a lot for something for, it really costs half that amount.
I think the other issue, Bob, is, I don't know how many times my doorbell rings, and someone, and you assume it's a student out there, and they're selling something, or, you know, a card, a discount card, or whatever, and it's, I think there's a lot of confusion out there as to who's doing the representing, and what's school sanctioned, and what's not. And I think this policy has run through that, was to try to help spell that out in clearer terms. It's an area of confusion, not only to, within the school, but outside the school as well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And can you just remind, if you have any questions, it shouldn't affect between mine and mine. Yeah, yeah, Oliver's suggesting, and he's right. Any suggestions or comments on this? This will be up for vote, second reading and vote at our April meeting. So, and there's a policy meeting tomorrow, if Oliver doesn't cancel it because of the weather. And any comments or suggestions, we certainly can consider them right up to the last minute. And so, especially on, something like this fundraising, I think, Bob, thanks for raising that. I think everybody should look at that and see if, if you want, if you're confused by it, then tell us that, because we do erase any confusion.
Is Superintendent Conference Day this year?
Superintendent Conference Day is going to be on the thirty-third, March twenty-third, that Friday. And Shen Station is the next day.
Twenty-fourth, right.
Yep, thank you. So, move to consent items. I'd ask for a motion to accept the consent items, Treasurers Report and Minutes of February sixth and February twenty-seventh. Got a motion? Naomi, second. Deanna? All those in favor? Consent items are approved, we'll move on to action items. I'm not sure, I've got the most up to date. I probably don't, because I knew there was discussion. Yeah, thank you. So, the first item is disposal of non-public textbooks to BOCs. Could I have a motion to accept that? Christina, second. Todd, all those in favor? Motion carries. We've got two scholarship items here, items two and three. The first, item two, is establishing a scholarship, Shen helping, Shen Scholarship in honor of a deceased member of our staff, Darlene Budmer. Significant here, five hundred dollars on an annual basis, and there's criteria, any scholarship that's established, not only criteria for how that's awarded, but also spelling out committee that's involved and those kinds of things. Very important that we have those things, it's a good transparency thing. And then, the item three is scholarship and local grant donations. I think it, I looked at the list, I saw it was over seven thousand dollars worth of, so could I have a motion on those two items? Deanna, second. Christina? Any questions or comments? With appreciation, all those in favor. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I just want to say that as part of Senate, Shen Helping China is a really big thing that we do, so I think this is really good that you guys have a scholarship. And I actually had Miss Budmer's daughter, I mean, Miss Budmer, this one, the older Mrs. Budmer, Ms. Budmer, her daughter, I had her for as a teacher last year, she was my favorite teacher, so I think this is a really good thing. She was anything like her mom, she definitely should be in Mrs. Budmer's name, so I just want to say that I, this is a really big thing you guys are doing.
Thank you for sharing that. All those in favor of that motion? Motion carries. Move forward to a service agreement on our, that's what I thought was, Troxel Communications, School Asset Manager. Let me get a motion and then see if there are any questions or comments anyone wants to make. Motion, Todd, second. Bob? Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Motion carries, and move forward to Mrs. Myla? Acceptance of special education placements? Let's get a motion, and then we'll see if we've got any questions or comments. Motion, Deanna, second. Bob? Any questions or comments for Michelle? Michelle, anything you want to share with us?
No, I'm...
All those in favor?
I'm along.
Motion carries. And thank you, Michelle, to you and your staff, for the amount of work that goes into this. We understand that this is, we see the paper at the end. We don't see the process and that exchange back and forth with parents, with teachers, and coming up with plans and modifying plans, so thank, pass that along. We do notice that.
And Bill, also, just to say, also, this time of year, when they start meeting for the IP reviews, and I know this is an extremely busy time, and a lot goes into that, and special attention for each individual student's plans, so thank you and your staff for that attention.
Thank you, proceed. Next is personnel. Let me get a motion on that for staffing recommendations, and then we'll see if we've got some comments from Jill. Naomi, second. Bob? What would you like to tell us?
Well, we just, we have two retirements on this board agenda. Barbara Timpanero, who's been with us for twenty-six years, in the finance department, she's retiring in June. And Patricia Willis is retiring after twenty years, and she's been a typist at high school East and West. So, those are two retirements for this time.
Any questions for Jill? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Welcome back, Becky. So, we have second reading, policies and procedures that we did first reading a month ago, and does anybody have any questions or...
Did she get me now?
Yes, I did. Excuse me, right before coming here.
I know, I was very late.
I pretty much have answered some of those questions, but I need to answer the rest of them regarding those two. Seventy-three seventeen R.
It's just a regulation.
And, right, and sixty-two, the other one, sixty-three seventeen, I believe. One was, it's the computerized...
Is it the regulation or the policy?
Yes, both of them are regulations.
Okay. So, you get the distinction, man. Yeah, it's a good distinction. We actually, we get these because one relates to the other, and you want to see what the regulation is that implements the policy. The board's role is approving the policy, but certainly, it's a feedback process, and we can respond to that. Can I have a motion on the acceptance of the recommended policy, second reading? Gary, second. Christina? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? So, Will, we look at those as a positive review.
Thank you.
We move forward if anyone else at this point would like to make public comments. We always offer that at the end of our business meetings as well.
Just a comment for me personally, I don't know yet, I'll know tomorrow, but I think my next Tuesday's meeting, I would be out of town.
Okay, okay. That being said, policy review, we've got a link on our, to the ShenNet website, and you can find the policies that we're going through, and the ones that are on our plan moving forward. Before we move to adjournment, just I want to call out again, this Saturday, Community Conversation, High School West, opportunity, nine-thirty, I would presume, on Saturday morning, opportunity for the public to engage in conversation, ask questions of Oliver,